It's called a meeting to order. I'd welcome everyone here tonight. This is our November 24th regular school board meeting. A roll call of board members shows all members of the president.
Robert.
Robert's not to audition, he's working so.
Okay. Chairman Kaiser is going to join us online. A stamp for implication, pledge to the flag, implication of Josh Johnson, pledge by the bridge.
Heavenly Father God, we come to you in prayer tonight to thank you God for all the wonderful blessings you've given us, thank you for bringing us here safely tonight Lord. This upcoming Thanksgiving season, we just thank you for touching us and being with us God, protecting our students and watching all of them God, we ask Lord for your continued blessings and bless our school district and our staff and help everyone have a good rest for great God. We just come to you tonight in Thanksgiving in our heart and just watch over everyone during this holiday that was to return Monday with a clean mind. For to your sons and may we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next order of business is approval of minutes. We had two sets of minutes. We're going for a regular meeting 10:27-25 and special call for a meeting on 10:28-25. I make a motion, we approve the minutes to have a second.
I second.
Got a motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have a student of school recognition and we have the Yellowjacket's Matt and Miss Stacy.
We've got the best one right now, best school anyway. Not the best principal, but the best school. Hello Yazzie, it's not my help, it's funny that I always end up getting to come right after test scores come out. It either September, October, or now it's November for this year. But I do have some really good information to share about our school if you've not seen anything published or anything yet on our school report card. We did recently get our KSA test scores from the spring. West Whiteford Elementary was a good solid yellow again, which we wanted to be green, but we were a good solid yellow. We actually went up almost six points overall in our scores. Even though we were overall yellow, we were in the green category for reading and math combined. We were in the green category for science, social studies and writing and we actually were in the blue category which we had the highest score in all of our schools for the school climate and our school safety. And to be honest, that means more to me just as much as the academic scores because I know if my kids can come to school and feel safe and feel that they're loved and appreciated, we give them to do anything. So that meant a whole lot to me as a school and in my school as well. We did have four students who were all distinguished this year. We had J.C. Adams who was distinguished in our third grade scores. We had Weston Wright that was distinguished in the third grade. We had Brady Howard that was distinguished in the fourth grade. And we had Abigail Phillips who was all distinguished in fifth grade and that is a mighty feat to complete. Third grade is reading and math, fourth grade is reading, math and then the science. And then in fifth grade, you have to get all distinguished in reading, math, social studies, the on-demand writing and the mechanics. So I'm truly, really proud of those four students. Other things we got going on right now, last spring we had STLP and we had not had STLP in a long time and Melissa Strand was somebody that we stole from Harley Boggs Elementary before they closed and brought her over to be a Yellowjacket and she has went above and beyond to get an STLP program at our school and a LEGO robotics program. Last spring, our STLP students actually placed ninth in the state and they had never competed before, so I was really proud of those students. Many of those students came back and just completed our regional competition and we had 11 students who advanced to the state competition for STLP. We had Molly Adams and Jet Collins and they created the Buzz Hub. If you've not seen that yet, that's a new podcast that we've got going on, it is awesome. They did a really phenomenal job with that. We had Hudson Cornet, Holden Fields, Jax Rose, Jamie Perkins and Owen Blair. They are creating a school garden and a community share table for their project. And then we have Wayland Snell, Madison Brown, Jayla Fuller and Scarlett Bailey and they are actually working on a rain barrel solar panel irrigation system. So when everything is kind of going hand in hand with all of these projects, their irrigation system is going to be watering the plants in the summer while we're not there. So they have done a really phenomenal job and we look forward to what they're going to do in the spring at the state competition. If you didn't get a chance, our drama program just performed Frozen Junior. That was phenomenal, a phenomenal performance for our fifth graders and then in conjunction with our middle school as well. In the spring, I'd like to invite you guys, you're going to do Grease. So that would be a good one, I think your baby's going to join us back in that one. I can't wait to watch it. We have a lot of talent at our little school. Just a few days ago, we had our LEGO robotics team go to compete in a regional festival to kind of showcase what they've been working on and they are scored in nine different categories and out of those nine categories, they got exceedingly high on all their scores, seven out of the nine. And that are some of the same kids that's on our STLP, that's Kendrick Gilbert, Kate Hawkins, Riker Mullins, Jax Rose, Jamie Perkins, Hudson Cornet, Easton Epperton, Baron Stewart, Hayden Worf and Owen Blair. So we're just looking forward to see what they're going to do too in the robotics thing. We have a lot of good things going on, our attendance is better than it was last year. Yeah, that's a good thing because we know if we can't get them to school, we can't teach them and get them where we need them to be. We have had a lot of different vibrant learning activities taking place in our school this year, so I'd like to welcome any of you all to come join us sometime and see what great things we got going on at West Whiteford. You know, normally I have kids with me, but I didn't really want to ask them why we didn't have it in school today. So thank you guys.
That night at the school this week is throwing everybody off.
Everybody. And I usually, we always bring kids to showcase and things and I hated asking them just to come out when we don't have it in school, but y'all have any questions?
Good job, Miss Stacy.
Thank you guys.
So the next order of business is public participation.
Zach Tricek couldn't be with us tonight, but he sent me a written report that I can send you, but I'll share some highlights with you. For the general trace in the alternative ed building, it's all interior doors are swung and 95% of the hardware is installed, exterior door glass has been installed, ceiling grid is 75% installed, the new asphalt has been completed, fixing has been completed, the restroom partitions have been installed, firewalls have been completed, terrazzo refinish has started today and it's scheduled to be complete on Wednesday. The marker boards, the tack boards have been installed. For plumbing and HVAC, the fixtures are set and complete, the PTACs and mini splits are up and running, passed inspection and 75% of the floor drain covers have been repaired. For electrical, all conduit boxes for lighting, data and fire alarm is installed, the rooms have new grid installed and new lighting installed, 65% of existing conduit has been stripped or strapped and secured per request of the state electricity inspector, the electrical inspector, and then 55% of the restways and throttle rigs installed. That's from Trace.
Okay, do you have a report for us?
Maybe yes, I do actually, a couple things. First, if you look, we need to choose or look at and approve the schedule for board meetings for the 2026 school year. Just a couple of notes, our regular board meetings are on the fourth Monday of the month, but when we get to May, that completes with Memorial Day, so we move that back a week. So Mondays in May would be Monday the 18th. And then when you look down to December of '26, the way Christmas falls, it would be moving it back to like, was it the 14th, which is really early or closer to the November meeting? Or we could have it at the regular time in December, which is the 28th, it's whatever you all prefer. That is Christmas break and we don't have to schedule a school that month so that students are stacked wouldn't be, we can schedule around that, but it would be that regular fourth Monday.
Any questions or concerns about the dates? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a second.
I second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
One other thing I want to share with you, you know, since we've redone the preschool playground and that, you know, there's a requirement for mulch and I think it's five or six inches of rubber mulch is required for safety in the preschool playground, but that also makes us students with disability have a harder time navigating it and so we've been looking for solutions to that for a while and finally found a company who is on our bid list that does a cord-end rubber surfacing for playgrounds. And it would be stable enough, but also soft enough that it's not a safety issue, but any students with disabilities could also access it. I'd like to ask the board to give us approval to go ahead and do that. It approximately costs for the preschool playground about $62,000. We look at turf that comes in around 100. This is the most economical and safest answer to our problem that we have because, you know, our preschool kids, many do have disabilities and this will give them an accessible playground if they have a wheelchair or difficulty walking or have a gait trainer or some of those other things so they can still navigate the playground, which is a big part of what they do in preschool, learning to work together, play together and do those things. But this is the most economical solution we have found for the preschool playground.
What do you all think about that?
It would make it, if you've been to the City of Whiteford's Autism Playground, that rubber surface is much like that, you know, it's a different surface, it's softer, so if this child falls, they're less likely to get injured or hurt. It's not just like an asphalt or a rubber, it's a rubber surface.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Got a motion second? Any discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
And that's all here?
Next, we have stop phase minutes. Any questions on the stop phase minutes? Is everything in order, Mr. Hawes? Next, we have monthly curriculum and instruction report and we're going to hear about our test scores from Mr. Ronnie Goins.
All right, I hope everyone's had a great evening. Laura Rennie's getting the slideshow hooked up. Just a couple notes, is this on?
I turned it off because it was giving feedback.
Okay. Just a couple notes, we've been working a lot with PLCs in the district, we've been working with the science PLCs through KI. This is district-wide, this is a voluntary option for teachers right now, but they do get a stop in front of them, so we're bringing in teachers from across the district for K8 for science PLCs, for K5 math PLCs and for ELA PLCs, K5. But we're really excited about that, we're getting pretty good participation and we're really hoping that's going to make a difference and I think, I think we're doing a lot of good things and we're going to talk about how that's paying off for us in a little bit. New teacher cadre, we had a meeting this past month, we've worked with our teachers around AI in the classroom, really fun working with our new teachers, I think that's something we really enjoy. We actually started a new aspiring leaders program for any person in the district who is interested in becoming a principal in the future or maybe in some other leadership position. We actually have seven this year who would join that, so that's really good numbers. They're working with Kim Washington, we partner with a lot. We're continuing to work with our Fortune the Learner. What we're really focusing on this nine weeks, it's proficient problem solvers. So that's something we want to continue on, that's something really important that's going to tie into our local accountability system. And the last thing, we've been working with our K5 principals and select teachers for a math implementation team. And we know that K5 math is an area that we really need to target and we're actually in the process of doing that, so we're doing some really good work with that. And before I move on to the test scores, any questions? Okay, trying to go a little bit quick because we've got a decent amount. Although Karen I think wants to stay a little longer, so. I'm going to kind of go through this kind of quick, I know some of you have heard this before, if at any point you have questions, let me know. So if we look at our accountability system, these are the six components that we're actually judged on and whenever you look at these, everybody is affected by all of them except the two that only pertains to the high school, the graduation rate and the post-secondary readiness. Everything else, the other four is things that the all schools are accountable for. With our English learners programs, we've got such a small population of English learners that we really don't, aren't accountable for that, so they take the amount that we're accountable for and distribute it proportionally to the other categories. These are just kind of the weights and I'll just kind of go through this, you can look at it. Every level has a little bit different weight in the system. If you look, for example, in elementary, they have a little more weight on reading and math and you can kind of look through and like, for example, science, social studies and writing, a little bit less weight at the high school level because they have the post-secondary readiness component and graduation rate. So like I said, I'm going to move kind of quick on these, but if at any point you have a question, let me know. Status score is what the students are truly scoring. Whenever they take the test, they'll either score novice, apprentice, proficient or distinguished and the students get scored based on what they scored. If it's a novice, they get no points, if it's an apprentice, they get half a point, one point for proficient and 1.2, 1.25 points for distinguished. Then they'll add up all those points, divide it by the number of students and you get what's called an APD score. That is your status score, what you truly scored. Now, a couple of years ago, they kind of changed the accountability system to include a change component, the factor in getting the overall growth. What they'll basically do is compare how you scored this year, your status, to how you scored last year and they'll subtract the two. If you scored much higher this year, you're going to have a positive change component. If you scored lower, you'll have a negative. They'll then take that change, add it to what you truly scored, the status, and that's going to give you an indicator score. I know that's a lot of information. The big thing is, is basically you're getting scored on your status, how you truly scored and then you're getting a change component. So if you grew, that's going to be a bonus, they're going to take whatever you scored, they're going to add that positive change to it. If you scored less than you did the previous year, it's going to take your score and bring it down. Okay? And this kind of just shows how they calculate scores, we're going to kind of skip over that. So the big story is, after they do all that, you're going to get an overall score and you're going to score in one of five classifications. The lowest classification is red and it moves up to the highest classification, blue. Okay? Any questions? Okay. So if you look, let's talk about our school and district highlights. It's pretty exciting this year, I think you will be too whenever you look at this. In our district, we had huge growth in our district. Our overall district elementary scores increased by 14.4 points going from orange to yellow. Our overall district middle school scores increased by 19 and 9 tenths points going from orange to green. And the overall district high school scores increased by 18 and 9 tenths points going from yellow to blue. So we had huge changes, I agree with you, that is something to celebrate. So in every category, elementary, middle and high school, we showed huge growth, I mean, that's, like I said. So we're yellow in elementary, green in the middle school, blue in the high school. And once again, you can kind of see here, so the top two high schools at the top, green with the middle, yellow in the elementary. Some other district highlights, we had two schools, LCC and Cowan labeled as blue schools, had two schools labeled as green schools, Letcher Elementary, Middle School, the middle, and Flemington Middle School. And Flemington is 6 tenths point from being blue, so close. All of our schools, I love this one, all of our schools were yellow or higher. We had no school in the district that was orange or red and that, that's awesome, I love seeing that. And whenever you look at accountability, I know we don't have 11 schools, but we have to separate our K8 schools into an elementary and a middle school whenever we look at the breakdown. So out of 11 schools, nine showed growth on their overall score. The two that didn't had a very, very small decline, 8 tenths of a point and 1.4 tenths of a point. So very, very good growth. Questions, comments, anybody? Everybody good? Okay. We had four schools showing growth of over 30 points in their overall score. Harley Boggs Elementary with 38 points, Cowan Elementary with 43 and a half points, Cowan Middle School with 41.9 points and Letcher Elementary and Middle School, the middle school section with 32.6 points, so huge growth. When looking at combined elementary scores for our district, we decreased our novice rate in every subject area. So reading, math, social studies, science, combined writing, every one of them we decreased our novice. We did the same in middle school except in combined writing, the novice rate only raised 1 percentage points in the combined writing. And our high school decreased novice rates in every subject except math, which increased by 1%. So great job of reducing our novices and remember, you get no points for a novice whenever you look at the accountability system. And we were above the state average in many grade level tests in middle school and in all high school tests on KSA. If you look at the school classifications in elementary, we were yellow in every, across the board in elementary. In middle school, Harley Boggs was yellow, Cowan was blue, Flemington was green, Letcher Elementary, middle was green and Whiteford was yellow. And at the high school, Letcher County Central was blue. And if you want to ever go on the school report card and look at this, you can look at surrounding district and I've gave you all kinds, in your board packet too, you should have all kinds of different documents that I looked at or kind of compiled with the data, so if you have any questions on those, you can ask me about them, but you've got all kinds of information, you can kind of sift through it if you want. But if you want to go to the school report card, that's the site, you can type it in, you can look at anybody in our district across the state, you can go back years and look, it's a really great resource. Looking at concerns, overwhelmingly positive, I was really happy with the majority of our scores. You can always get better. Our biggest concerns, our elementary scores are still lower than our middle and high school collectively and there's room for improvement in all areas with our elementary. I think that, and that's something that we're targeting, we talked about a minute ago with our PLCs, with our math implementation team, we know that's where we can get stronger at and we are working in that area. Our K5 math scores are really a big target area for us, we need to really work on improving those. And one of our schools is labeled ATS I, and it was already a TSI school and we have one still labeled as ATS I around specialized education scores with that. So a lot of information, I went pretty quick. Any questions? Okay. All right, thank you all.
Thank you Ronnie. A student, it is so important and to see us improve in every area, it makes me happy. We still have learned to grow and we want to continue to do the things that work for our kids and to build in those vibrant learning experiences as we work towards that next accountability system, which will take that into effect. But our kids and staff and families work so hard and to see their results and to see that growth is amazing, so I'm reticent for all of our staff and students.
Good to hear test scores are moving on up. Next, we have Mr. Brian Johnson with maintenance and transportation.
Well, I'm sorry that my stuff's not going to be as exciting as Ronnie's, but in your board packet, you all can see the maintenance and transportation report and we were talking last board meeting about trying to get through without having any snow days, but we got through almost one and a half until, although the weather outlook from here looks pretty good. On the maintenance side, you can see on our report, there's just our normal custodial supplies, things that we've been working on, we're still working on some heating areas and some things, we're switching over from heat to air conditioner and we have those days where it's 65 sometimes, 30 in the morning, so it's a little bit different. I've got one thing I wanted to give you all, we didn't get it in the board packet and apologize for that, that's, we were working on our vocational school, had a crash in the system that controls the HBA city and.
The new one?
The new one.
Yeah.
The new vocational and to fix that, we had to get a computer system to control that. This is a contract from the company that runs it and the company, if we bought the computer system and installed, had it installed and stuff, it was like $10,000. But with this company here, we can have a service agreement with them for $9, $800 a year and they will service it and upkeep it for three years. And I know we can't enter a three-year contract, but we can do it like we do our copier machines and do one year at a time. And that's what this is and we didn't get the contract back from, to change it to start on December 1 until this one day last week and it was a little bit late for us to try to get it into the board packet for you all, so I apologize for that. That's what that is and I just wanted to talk to you all about it a little bit if you had any questions about that or anything. But other than that, everything's been going as smoothly as can be at this point. Do you have any questions about anything in there? Thank you. You're welcome.
Do you all want to vote on that now or do it with consent?
Oh, is this?
Either way y'all.
We need to approve it.
Yeah.
You can do it either with consent or you can do it now.
There, which way would it be better?
I make a motion that we approve it. We have a second.
I second.
Second by leaning. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Next, we have monthly student and attendance report. Ms. Karen.
Hello. It isn't hard to follow Ronnie tonight with good news, but I do believe that attendance plays a huge part in our test scores and I believe that getting them here a little more last year helped give a good impact on that, so hopefully we'll do even better this year. Our attendance this month, you can see, is at 89 again, we have been battling sickness again and like I said last month, we'll get one school back on demand and then it hits the next school. So what's going on is we have some schools that are still performing really well with their attendance and then some schools that are, that are sick on those days are really low. So I don't think that it is getting them back in bad habits, I just think that it is truly sickness right now. So I'll take a win with our 89% because it's still higher than last year at this time. Whiteford Middle School has reclined their, their highest percentage of the month for November with 91%. You know, Cowan has knocked them off a little bit this year, so they were happy about that. Also, this month, we did like a backstage attendance challenge where I kind of monitored attendance for a week because we wanted to do something special for a school that was, the kids were coming to school just on their own without having like a big hoopla challenge. So next week, we did a little something special for Thanksgiving and that will debut next week on our social media, so make sure, or this week, I forget where we are. We are already Thanksgiving, aren't we? That'll be this week, it should be Wednesday that we'll have that published, so be looking for it because it is very special. And that's it. Bye guys. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Next, we have a report from a student representative.
Colby couldn't be here, he's already joined family in Tennessee, but he sent me a report to share with you and so I'm going to read it just as he has sent it. I couldn't make it tonight, so I sent this report instead. Please imagine I'm standing here with a container of cookies. Our school has reached an exciting milestone, we achieved blue status on state testing, the highest level possible. This accomplishment reflects the hard work of our students, teachers and staff. To celebrate, we held a school-wide event in the gym featuring house games and activities. Every student enjoyed a dirty soda as part of the celebration, I can tell you what those are, as part of the celebration and the energy in the building was amazing. It was a fun and memorable way to recognize such a significant achievement. As we move into the season, winter sports are officially underway. Our basketball teams have already started practicing and we're preparing and are preparing for what we believe will be a strong and competitive season. This evening, we're hosting meet the Cougars where we will introduce all athletes participating in winter sports across our Cougar teams. This event serves as our kickoff to the season and excitement is high among players, coaches and families. We're looking forward to a great start and a successful season. Go Cougs. P.S., I'm sorry I couldn't bless you all with my presence. Best regards, Colby.
He's a good one.
He is. And dirty soda is just regular soda with flavoring in it. It's tough.
It's got that current flavor.
Yeah.
Next, we have a report from LCTO, LCESB, is anybody here to give that report?
We don't have one tonight.
Next, it's old business, second reading of policy for school resource officer. Do you have anything to add to that before?
I don't, it's just, it's our second reading, so it needs a motion and a vote for it.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Second by rating. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
I will add that we do have our ORI number, and so, and then our police chief has been sworn in, so we, she's hit the ground running and things are moving fast. And in the next two weeks, we'll be looking at hiring the next two positions, so we're really excited, and she's making things happen. It's been a great, a great thing, and things are moving quickly.
Next, it's new business, we have Cassian Adams, superintendent, you have to cover the...
Thank you.
Cassian Adams.
Um, one, you have some shortened school day requests for special needs students. Two is some tutoring rates for PRI tutors at three schools. The reason those are different for each school is because each school is given a budget from our grant, from the PRI grant, and so they could work within that budget, and so some of them did a little bit different things with the tutoring cost. That needs your approval. Three, we have the opportunity to work with the LKLP Community Action Council on a program for attendance. This is an outside agency that will kick in and work with families to help remove any barriers or obstacles for their students' attendance before it becomes a court issue or illegal, or a legal issue with the Department for Captive, the Cabinet for Families and Children. So the whole goal is to intervene and help parents and families get students' attendance up without having to intervene in those agencies. We met with them and talked with them. This is going to be a short time frame that we have to work in, and they only work with K-5 schools, but they work with the parents and those, those students, and it has to be completely voluntary. We can refer kids, parents to them, but the parents can then work with them, and choose to work with them or not. So we thought it was a good opportunity to bring in some more resources for our parents who may be having difficulties with attendance. And then four is an overnight trip for a band for competition. Five is overnight for boys' basketball to tournaments in December in Round County and Mount Sterling. Six is a rental agreement for the Flemington Middle School cheerleaders to use the auditorium at the high school for a baby pageant. Seven is a rental agreement for the Cougar youth wrestling to use the high school for a tournament on November the thirtieth. Eight is another rental agreement for the Cougar wrestling to use the high school gym in these, I'm sorry, in January. Nine is a rental agreement for the Bluegrass Volleyball Academy to use LCC and Whitesburg Middle School for practices between November and June. Of course, those are pending appropriate insurance. And then down to number ten is the BG4 that goes into the backpack system for the Oklahoma National School.
Is that all of it?
That's it.
I make a motion that we approve it, Cassian Adams. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second by leaning. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have a business, financial report. Mr. Joshua.
Like I said, that's some good news with their test scores, and they seem to be trending in the right way, so we're doing some good things. In your board package, you'll see your bank reconciliation there for the month of October. We'll go through each one of the funds, everything balanced out. General fund, ten million, six hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars. Special revenue, two million, six hundred eight thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. Your Fund Twenty-One District Activity Funds, thirty thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars and eighty cents. Fund Three Ten Capital Outlay, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred two dollars and forty-five cents. Your Fund Three Twenty, your building fund, which is your, for your bottom payment, nine hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty cents. Fund Three Sixty, your construction fund, one million, eight hundred seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-four cents. Fund Four Hundred is your debt service, one hundred six thousand, six hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. Cash with fiscal agents, thirty-four thousand, one hundred fifty dollars and eight cents. And your food service, two hundred seventy-two thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. Total cash investments, eleven million, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. So that's your bank reconciliation for the month of October. If it's over in there, your Fund One salaries, they're listed in there for the month of October, month and year. Next is our Fund One everything. That's all of your object codes to include expenditures that's not salary or benefits. And then your Fund Fifty-One salaries are included as well, the last page in your package.
Make a motion to pay our bills. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second by Angie. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
We'll appreciate it. I do want to share one more thing, we've got some good news today, kind of keep the ball rolling, I guess. We got an email notification that our Whitesburg Athletic Complex over here had, you know, we've been denied our FEMA funding, and we did an appeal process, and it was denied. And then we did a second appeal, and we got news today, it had been approved. So they're going to come through, and they're going to be reimbursed with a smidgen invoice and everything, because we've already paid for everything. So hopefully we'll be getting some FEMA money back for that. Well, not hopefully, we should be. I don't know, I hope I'm still working when we get it, because it takes a while. But we are obligated to get it, so the other took about three years, but hopefully we get this one quicker, because the project is a hundred percent complete and done. So that's some good news we're going to thank.
Good to hear. Next, we have a review of the superintendent's report on personnel.
You have the attached report, it just shows some rank changes and some classified and certified substitutes we hired in the last month.
Any questions for the superintendent? Next, order of business, executive session. Karen, it's sixty-one point eight one oh, Incova Mutual Insurance Group versus Kentucky Employees Mutual Insurance Group. Supreme Court of Kentucky case number twenty, twenty-four SC oh five four seven WC. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to motion.
Motion to motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second by leaning. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.